Coffee doesn't affect the chance to too many years on midnight shift.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting, the board of selectmen for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Timeout 7:00 PM. Can we begin with a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Any, any public comments? Okay, see, none, no hands up. Great, correspondence?
None.
All right. I would accept a motion for the approval of the board's selectmen special meeting minutes from July 29th, 2025, so.
Second.
Okay, so let's see, we were all present.
Yes.
Yes. Any discussion? I'll turn my vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. I accept a motion to approve the board of selectmen regular meeting minutes from July 15th, 2025, so move.
Second.
We're all there, any, any additional, any discussions? Saying that, I'll turn mine, in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, carries unanimous. We're gonna forego the first select report, obviously, because we had a huge agenda, probably had to put that on there. Um, we're gonna go to old business. Uh, first up is the approval of the abatement of taxes from Bethel Housing Authority and Bethel Congregate Corporation for the grand list of October 1st, 2024, in the amount of $241,928.19 sets. We have our tax collector online here, hi Paula. Wanna make any comments or anything, I know this is kind of a.
Hi all, this is something we do every year to abate the taxes for the, uh, for properties. Um, for the pilot program.
Okay, with that, I would second a motion to approve the abatement of taxes for the Bethel Housing Authority and Bethel Congregate for the grand list of October 1st, 2024, for $241,928,000. And I, excuse me, $241,928.19 sets.
So move, second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, that motion is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was quick, wait, 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 before you go Paula. Any, any news down there?
I'm a grandma. Born this morning, I've been up since 3:00 AM, I'm sorry. I'm a happy grandma to a baby boy, seven, uh, seven pounds, 10 ounces, born at 12:26 AM this morning.
Congratulations Paula.
Thank you.
All right, go be with your, uh, with your grandson, you said, or daughter?
Grandson, another grandson.
Wow, that's cool.
Yes. Hey, tell me about it.
Okay, so, um, uh, next up is a consideration and or approval of the contract for a solar project, Bethel High School. So we, um, I think you brought some, so, um, Paige and Kyle from Titan both brought some information for us, I don't, is this the same we had last time?
Uh, yeah, some updates.
Some updates? Okay, if you bring this forward, we'll. Yeah. Thank you.
There's three in there.
Okay.
Yes.
Maybe, maybe someday, I don't know, um, well, we'll, we'll, considering you, you guys have come today, um, are there particular differences with this, what you're giving us and what we've reviewed before, and does it change the contract?
No.
Okay. Okay. Any, anything that you feel you wanna highlight, just in general quickly, before we get into the contract discussion?
I think there were just some questions around, um, front of meter projects versus back to your projects.
Okay.
If you would ask, let's not go back, be able to follow up on that, get that, um, that, uh, conversation, Green Skies, um, we developer in this, um, for this project, uh, so, front of meter project. I think we addressed some of this during our last conversation, but, um, because of the interconnection, those, those prices, like costs, it's about 20% more than, uh, behind shooter projects. Um, economics, uh, on one of those projects, on an annual basis, could be about $7,500 to use up these space in terms of roofways. Uh, market rate for that, around, uh, $15,000 per mega watt, uh, in a size. And, um, this is about half that size. So, um, that'd be the, the one, you know, follow up that we took away, and there, there's a couple other follow up questions, um, that we tried to address, uh, in the last line of this presentation.
Well, did, did they get, did they get rid of, if there's damage to the solar project, we still have to pay?
We're, we're gonna talk about that contract in a moment, this is just them.
Yeah.
Give us more information, yes, I have some information, we talked about the contract, I wanted to go through what we're going to propose. Okay. Wanna go right to the contract part? Is it this?
Yeah, just.
Okay. Um, okay. So, um, there were, there were a couple of things, so, looking at what we were gonna, we haven't gone back and forth with them yet, so, the, the red line addition I have is what we will present to you, once we've talked about it, um, we may have to go look at a couple of things, one thing we have it. Make sure we, we haven't looked at the insurance with our broker yet, just to make sure this covers that, but I think when we're done, if we have three other things, we can at least send the contract over to people that's, that's the goal. Um, so, a couple of the things that they changed, the contract, of the, the, the big one we talked about was, um, what happens if there's damage to the roof that we have to repair, whether the provider says they need to repair it or we need to repair it. It was, it was set in here where we had to pay all the electricians, or excuse me, pay them for what electricity they would have got, and we have taken that out. Um, that was one of the big problems. In addition, um, we, uh, we did add some language in here with respect to the change in law and force majeure. Basically, we want to, uh, if there's something where there's changes in supply chains or materials, because we're thinking about tariffs, we've added language in there to cover us, if there's some sort of tariff or something that it doesn't adversely affect the town. Um, we've also asked that if we go to sell this, some, or if they wanna sell it someday, that there are three appraisers, not just an appraiser they choose. So that's something we're gonna propose. Um, there's a new section requiring the provider to give the means of assurance for covering the cost of removing the system. We've talked at this, that someday in 20 years when this is done, we have the option to buy it. Uh, I guess, still do an agreement to keep running it from there, or have it removed. And there were some questions in the air whether they would actually pick up the cost of removing, so that's something we're gonna send that way. Um, there was a, uh, a section talking about what we have to do to make this contract work. We, we, we're gonna have legislative approvals, in fact, we know that's gonna have to go to a special town meeting, perhaps, and things like that. We were just discussing the town council on whether or not this could be considered a lease agreement, I mean, it's a service agreement. If it's a lease agreement, it actually has to go to, uh, a referendum. I, I don't think that's the case, but we're gonna talk, right, if it's a lease agreement, for over a million dollars, I think it's structured as a service agreement, we have to, we have to vet that out. So that's something that is gonna still be kind of hanging out there. Um, let's see here, the, uh, one of the things that was talked about in here is with respect to taxes, and who carries the burden of taxes. Um, the town, I don't think can represent whether it's personal property, and it will or won't tax, that's really gonna be up to the assessor. So if the town looks at this as an agreement, we're not, we're not gonna basically come out there saying, yes, it's personal property, or no, it's not personal property, so, that's something that you guys will have to talk about with the provider. Um, and, uh, one of the things that, it, it basically says, you know, if, if there are taxes that are coming out of the blue, that we'll be sharing those responsibilities. You know, there were many things that were structured that were kind of on us, so we're kind of coming back and saying, hey, you, you have to have some skin to gain. Let's see, uh, the big one was the town obligation to pay, uh, for power, if it was damaged or something, then we take that out. Um, we've gotta find out what the insurance is, we added a provision for FOI. For, you know, this is gonna be a public document, so when we do this contract, it has to be, uh, affordable, and, um, we, uh, we added a new section providing for no personal liability. So, or, of their personnel, personnel, I can't read it. So, those were some of the big pictures, the, the big things we talked about and took out. Now, I'd like to turn a few guys have questions.
So, if the roof is damaged, right? Or, let's say, one of our AC units has catastrophic failure, and we need to remove it from the roof. Who pays to remove the solar panels so we can get it off the roof?
We do. Yeah, we, we pay to remove, if, if something is damaged for, like, of ours, and we wanna repair the roof, we're responsible for removing the solar panels and putting back.
The cost, that's two to 300,000? To off all the.
All, the whole building. Yeah, I don't think we're, we're gonna take all the, but, that is, if there's an issue, it is our cost to remove the panels and put it back on. We're not paying them for, but we're not paying them for electricity, only have some mutual benefit. That's something to consider.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're going 20 years out, and, you know, the light expectancy on a lot of these units and stuff, I mean, we could be outwitting the expectancy of, of some of these units and, and other things, and, you know, just because there's a new roof, I mean, I'll tell you, all these broken roofs sometimes leaked, you know, and you're gonna be putting panels on, we're gonna have to pay to take panels off if there's a leak on the roof, you know, regardless of whether it's new or not, I've seen it happen on a lot of commercial projects where, you know, some of the times, you know, some of the Firestone products they actually found were shrinking, causing seams, you know, water was coming in, and they're giving you a 20-year guarantee on the roof, but it doesn't matter, if you gotta pay to take solar panels off, that's, you know, for me, that's just a really big concern, because we're, we're committing to this for 20 years.
One of the, one of the things we talked about is whether they would screw them on on the roof, or whether they'd be ballast. Do we have any choice of that, or sit up to the provider? Because if they're ballast, all we really have to do is unhook the pa- panels and either move them off the roof, it's not, it's not $200,000 at that point, it's not.
The developers will work with the company to make sure all the warranties will end what they still have in, just the design.
Yeah. Um, I would like to recognize, we do have the, uh, Chair of the Public Site, Milton Commission here, uh, former Chair, their Chair, your new Chair right now.
So, when you put, when the town put panels on, Johnson and Rockwell, which we had just finished renovations there with. We had to go through this situation of the roofing company, um, was finished, warranty was in place, and then they kind of suspended the warranty. Panels were put in place, any repairs that needed to be done, I don't remember if they did that, or if they connected them anyway, because I wasn't part of that, see, and put them in place, and then the come roof company came back out, inspected everything, and put the warranty back in place. So, if you're gonna be putting a roof on it first, on the high school, before you put panels in place, even if you do by sections, because we got new equipment going on there too, with all the work on, with the, with the, the, we're working on now, and the HVAC that's being upgraded. I think you'll be, you'll be funded that maybe here, at some point, so you're putting, so as you get it in place, you're taking them out.
So, right now, the, just to understand, the, the plan right now is eventually we're gonna do a, nice, but we know that's coming. And the, the idea here was by getting this in now, we can get into the NREC program before it's further reduced. And, because they're, they're whittling away at it as we speak. The idea is that if we can start this project and do it on a part of the roof that's, that we can do it on now, that's not gonna be replaced from the gym. Then we're able to spend 5% of this now, for the July 26th, we can be in the process, and then, again, all this is gonna hinge on getting this all approved by the voters in the spring, because we can't start this unless we have approval for all in the roof.
I was just, but I was, yeah, for or against, I was just saying, we already went through Repland Johnson, and I don't know the same thing that happened when it went on, the panels went on, kind of yield. But, all that had to be taken into consideration, but you guys spend through that, I'm sure, and you go through step-by-step processes.
Maintaining the roof warranty is very, very important.
Yeah.
And just real quick, I don't know where the 200,000 came to remove the.
I don't know, that's all.
And again, and, and so just for clarification, at the end, 20 years, it's gonna cost 200,000 to 300,000 to get rid of this one? That would be the removal, yeah, put it back. Okay, what happens if 20 years, we don't wanna buy them, what happens? That would be the developers, so they get them off our roof.
Right. And, and, and just once, that was, the 200,000 was the whole.
The whole roof.
Which would never happen.
Yeah.
You know.
I, yeah, that would be if something, I, I, I can't imagine the situation, but if you had, for whatever reason, take off every single panel and do all the racking, with all the, all the packing.
If there was that kind of damage, we'd probably be, be talking to our insurance company.
I would, I would, I would not go to school.
Um, but to Brian's point, I mean, we would, if we wanna fix something on the roof, we do have to take off that section and close it. I think everyone here wants to.
And what does it do to your roofing warranty? I mean, you know, some of those rubber roofs, you know, are very specific that, you know, once they, you know, go around, they do all their pitch pockets and stuff like that, anything else to afford the warranty of the roof, so we're gonna install a new roof, we're gonna enter into an agreement, we don't even know if our roofing contractor is gonna accept, give us a warranty if we tell them that we're putting.
That, that would be a critical component of putting solar on, we too.
But with roofing company, but do we lose our 5% if the roofing company says, look, Firestone or whatever product they use isn't gonna give you warranty if you're planning on putting all these racks, whether they're screwed in or not?
I think roofers are accustomed now to dealing with solar.
This is even at the first roof, you know, that, that's installing, so, the companies, the commercial companies are used, they work with it, obviously, solar business.
And it's, the manufacturer's warranty is different than the installer's warranty. So, you know, the manufacturer, the materials are gonna be warranted out further than the installer.
Depends, like a Firestone products, it's a 20-year guarantee, doesn't matter what clause is. No, that, that's, that's the installation, roofer are certified to install it, labor and material. You don't pay for anything if that leaks with the Firestone products. Depends on which roof you build. But there are companies out there that don't guarantee it, because their guys and gals are certified to install that, they actually come out and inspect your roof after it's been installed, to make sure it's all done properly.
And then thoughts, I mean, I think, I think where we go from here is we submit what we have back to Titan to give to the developer, um, and see where you guys come back. If you want, I mean, we could do a special, and they give it back to us, and move it then, or we could, we could approve the, be able to do it when it comes back, as long as all these conditions are met. How, I mean, how would you, I'll kind of test your mind, how would you like to proceed, just do a special and decide if that's what you wanna do, or? You feel like you're.
It's a big decision. We're locking, we're locking ourselves in for 20 years, that's, that's, that's a long timeframe, and we don't know what's gonna happen to electric rates over 20 years, I know historically, they've gone up, but I remember when gas was $5 a gallon, they said it would never come down, and in one month, it's buck 86 after the, so, we felt a prime, uh, mortgage crisis. You know, I'm also worried about, you know, our mechanicals putting up there, and, you know, if you think that we're not gonna have a problem over the course of 20 years, I mean, our mechanicals, but, uh, I don't, I don't think so, I mean, I'm not a hard no, but I'm not like a hard yes, I'm not like overly, you know, I just feel like, I mean, we have a short time to approve this, so we gotta get that by August 15th.
It was September 15th.
Oh, we have till September 15th, oh, I thought it was August.
The, the, the applications are currently open.
We, we could lose the position because their first.
Yeah. It closes September.
I, I think when we spoke about August 15th, they was trying to give us the best position for this type of application. Right, because I know they opened August 4th for some applications.
I mean, how many, how many do you have on the pipeline right now?
Uh, for the schools.
Are ready to actually submit applications.
I, for me, I have four applications.
That are already ahead of us?
And I.
Just.
Oh, for schools specifically, I have one, um, I can't speak on behalf of my colleagues or other, you know, people who can say. Um, and I know a lot of our municipality clients and private clients, once the ITC started to phase out, uh, everyone is trying to get into, you know, this, on this tetris, because EDRIS itself in state connect is changing, federally is changing, so they're trying to lock into rates, which you guys saw a change in rates, you know.
Already, yeah.
Um, so I, now, can only speak on behalf of me, and I have one other town, but I know my colleagues have, you know, two other towns, but they're also. There is a total of 20 megawatts in the school cargo for EDRIS in Eversource, um, so, you know, that, that is pretty big, you know, we're at high school, high schools typically are the largest, um, buildings in towns, and we're at half a megawatt, I'd say, it was 556 kilowatt hours, so.
And there have been a lot of town or school around the state that happens.
Yeah, and we've done, we've actually done a lot of the, um, school-owned, your town, or buildings across the state, both Eversource, TY, with a lot of solar, so I don't know what applications are gonna go for this year, but I do know myself and my other colleagues have other towns that we're working with.
Right, and I asked the other day, uh, about the engineering, uh, the weight load on, on those existing buildings. Uh, at what point does your engineer say yes or no? I mean, is that a, one of the first things that they're gonna look at to see if it's a viable installation there?
Yes, generally what happens is that the PPA would be finalized, the EDRIS application would be submitted. Uh, once the EDRIS award is made, and we know that, and I think there's a lot of different steps in the process as far as approving the new roof and everything like that. Once all those things happen, um, and we know that there's a viable project there, that's when an engineer restarts the lead gauge, but before anyone steps foot from a contractor perspective, I just want something.
So, are we liable for any costs up to that point?
Yeah.
No.
Did, did you look at what we were paying? You know, how the rates change, like, where were we prior to the current rate of 17.65?
Yeah, that's, uh, that 17.65 is the supply rate plus the kilowatt hour, uh, chart is on the bill, it's, uh, APW charges.
So, that's including supply?
That's including supply in, uh, sub T and D, but not all of the.
So, the, the PPA rate will only be based on 600,000 kilowatts. The remaining million kilowatts we use will be put at whatever the supply rate is, and whoever you have us signed up with. I mean, is, does this company, this Green Sky or whatever their name is, do they sell electricity tip?
No, they're just, that's older company.
So, it doesn't prevent us from going with Town Square or another provider finding the cheapest energy rate?
No, which, I know we have a meeting next week, um, actually, for the procurement aspect of the town, I know your contracts are heading this through December. Next Wednesday, we have meeting to go over contracts that we've been raising up for you guys. I've talked ahead and back even though for instance, but we discussed that next week.
Uh, we've historically locked in reasonable rates, or rates, uh, rather than pretty good. I mean, but I think that, it gets back to what we talked about this, yes, we're locking into a PPA of 12 point, excuse me, 12.7 cents. Right? Over a long period of time, the question is, is that a safe bet? That's, their, their, their numbers show us going up to 23 cents at the end of this, and to point it might not.
It's basically, it's basically a, a little bit under a third of the power we use, correct, so we're heading our bet on a third.
Yeah, not the whole thing.
Power consumption, it's basically.
But that, that third of the power saves us a million dollars.
Yeah, it covers about 40% of power generated or power used.
Some, that's cool, yeah.
Right, I mean, it saves us a million dollars, it's also not a problem.
Exactly.
That's, that's.
No, no, it's great unless we have a problem.
Yeah, we have, uh, we have at some costs, or we have, and we've tried to mitigate as much as in the contract, yeah, exactly. And by the way, it only saves us a million dollars if the rates go up like that, it could be half that, let's say the rates stay the same, well, we're gonna save 500,000 over 20 years.
Now, how much we're, you're saying if we did it before the meter, right, you were saying that we would pick up about 7,500 bucks a revenue? 7,500 dollars a year.
But this is in front of the meter.
This is, uh, what we presented here.
This is what I.
Behind, I'm sorry. Okay, so if we, if we go to the.
Go to the front of the meter. All you're doing next, you're acting like a landlord, just leasing the space on your roof, right over.
Yeah. Do you say at the end of it, we pick up 7,500 dollars out of the hole?
No, 7,500 a year.
Get extra.
7,500, so, 20 years, it's, whatever, a little under 160,000.
What, um, what are the downsides for municipality, or upsides for, in front of the meter, and we talked about that last month?
It's, it's a, it's a more costly installation than. So, general, that, if we're projecting the savings, like, $30,000 on the meter. The ability to, uh, collect 7,500 dollars on the, on the flip side, if you did the other structure, that's, that's generally you know, that's a good point, but, um, uh, but the, the, the cost of the front of the meter project tends to be higher, it's about 20% higher than the, than on meter project, because the interconnection process. Um, the, the pro, uh, which was Ryan has pointed out, I think, last time, and it's, and it's, you're, you're not taking any market risk, you know, there's a there's a, rates go up, rates go down, if you're saving the, the 30, or you're break even, or you're underwater on that hedge. Um, on the, behind the meter, on the front of the meter, it's always a roof place, take, that's like a real estate transaction, you're always hitting 7,500 bucks. Or 7, 7,500 bucks, that's, that's all.
But then you have the liability, if something goes wrong, you might have to pay the, the, the company that the lost generation of it too, so.
If something happens, yeah, something happens.
You know, you got a big liability, all that stuff on that roof, for 7,500 dollars a year.
Taking that same liability for 30,000.
Yeah, or, or 30,000.
So, one problem. You don't think they're gonna spend 20,000, I don't care how many solar things are taken down, if they're saying it's, you know, 200 to 300,000.
For the whole.
For the whole, right, but how many panels are they talking about putting up there?
Hundreds of thousands, hundreds of thousands.
Just want you to think about it, depending where your unit is, have to get to that unit, how many panels you, you have to remove to get to a unit.
Yeah.
Again, I don't wanna be Debbie Downer, like, I would love to save money, I just, you know.
There's a red, red.
There are six feet setbacks from HAF units and the end of the roof, so that way, other, uh, maintenance has to go, specifically with HAF, um, lighting anything else on the roof, there's six, six feet setbacks.
So, they, they put pads and walkways to get to all access points?
Not, yeah, they have walkways between solar, and they have six feet setbacks from the actual units itself, that way, the other maintenance workers can go up there and work on whatever.
So they have paths, like?
Yeah.
So someone, there'll be a clear path to our unit, so we don't have to worry about maintenance workers smashing one of your solar panels?
Every time you have to change a filter on, or somebody gives a key, the panels off.
Yeah. And there, yeah, there's specific setbacks that you have to do, what construction, structural systems, uh, from the end of the roof. So that way, you're not too close to the edge, also too many, you know, that's up there.
And what provisions happens if there's vandalism or something like that, the panels? If someone vandalizes the panels, and the answer, I don't know why you're looking at me like that, it could happen very easily.
Yeah.
Someone could vandalize a panel, right?
Yeah.
Who's responsible for the replacement?
It's a good, yeah, it's a good question, I, I think in, in general, if this would be more of an insurance question, um, in general, I would think that would be covered by property insurance, uh, that loss, but.
And lost generation, what would happen with that?
Same.
These are things that.
We've taken the generation out of the contract. We're, we're not completely, we are, we are not going to pay for lost generation, if it's.
But we still have to replace.
We have, we'd have to replace a panel through insurance, or whatever, if it's broken, or, or if we break it. And if we have to do maintenance, we have to take whatever panels down and put that up again. But, you know, it.
Where do you think, what were your thoughts on it?
Well, I was just gonna ask, on, uh, on the, uh, maintenance end of it, Green Skies takes care of everything, it's no extra cost to us.
Yes.
They need a new elevator, they. They need a new inverter, they replaced the inverter.
Correct.
The panel, the panel went bad, they replaced the panel, so it's no cost to us. So we get thirty three thousand roughly for sure. It's my, one of my concerns is is the weight on the roof, so um. So you're gonna have to wait until the engineering is really done on it, but no.
If the engineering comes out wrong, then.
There was a, uh, it's this in, in, actually my hometown, Columbia, where. There's a section of the roof that got ended up getting removed from the project down there. Because of that, that issue.
Well, that's a good point, what if a a section of the roof or a third of the roof is not supportable of it? Does the project become affordable then?
Yeah, the ultimate project size uh, changes. It's not uncommon to see a project start at. A certain size.
But at what point does it become not worth doing? If they had, if they had reduced the size of the project by a third. Is it cost effective for us to do it then? So do we have a say about that?
Thirty three thousand, you're getting eleven thousand a year? You know, a- a- another question, and again, I'm not. Is up on electricity, because you guys obviously. But, you know, there's been a lot of talk about transmission lines and the effect on health. To people who live near the transmission lines. Have there been any studies done? Is there any health concerns? With this generating of electricity and and how it's transferred, have any studies, does it cause, can it cause issues? With the people in in the buildings, is is, you know, one question I would have, because, you know, we never do that about the high transmission lines, so. People lived underneath him and never thought there was nation with them, but they found out that. There were a lot of negative consequences to living next to those.
It's a good question, not that I'm aware of, uh, I mean, these are, but across a lot of schools, like I said, you know, my. My kids go to school with, uh, you know, solar panels on the roof, that's something that I'm. You know, concerned about, that's. You know, like I've heard, uh, so not that I'm.
Actually had this question once in another meeting, like something very similar, and my colleague. Had said, there are no studies right now, but uh. Think about everything else that you use your cell phone, that's a lot closer to you. There's nothing been been linked to anything health wise with solar, um. But it's like, it's like using cell phone, you know, you're constantly using cell phone and you're not scared to use that, so. And and there's nothing that's linked to using something that's so close to your body, that's on your body at all times, so. You know, to my point, I wouldn't worry about health aspect of it, and there hasn't been anything like.
Dan, are you familiar with our current solar, the twenty year projects?
Well, the ones we have now? I think the twenty years, the the car projects on our high school, you actually. You you actually reviewed them.
I don't remember the exact number of how old they are, uh, just we took a deep dive into all the utility bills and the solar systems to make sure they were working.
We own those.
I'm just wondering about the. The length of what they hold us.
Well, they're they're usually about twenty years is what they're good for, the the same thing with the landfill. They say it's like a twenty year, but it could go longer. Yeah, but they do, but they do, well, I mean, I don't. Looking at solar panels, they don't transmit anything. They're they're hurt directly to the line, I'm not concerned, cell phones, I'd have much more, I much more worried about putting a cell phone antenna next to the school than.
What is their, what is their projected revenue? Year, like, how much are they making? On this project after they spent the. Nine hundred thousand to do the project, what what are they, what are they planning? On generating? I mean, I guess we can multiply some of that calculator, twelve point one two seven by six hundred eighty thousand.
They're gonna get nineteen something cents kilowatt rate.
That would be in front of the meter project.
Does that have a calculator? I'm just, I'm just curious to see, like, what what are they generating on this project?
It's 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 something around there, between the end rest benefit and the cost. We, we, I mean, we've just given, I mean, we've, we've modeled them out to see, you know, we own them at that height for a small business. We can finance some of these projects ourselves. Generally, we've added a market. Single digit. So it's not something that we we go for soon.
So roughly, they're looking to take in about. Eighty two thousand. I mean, is that by math, right, six hundred fifty thousand kilowatts, right? Point one two seven oh.
They, they, so they're getting also a benefit.
How much is that?
So I would just, I would use the nineteen cents.
I got a hundred and twenty three thousand a year minus ours.
Hundred twenty three thousand.
So ninety grand a year, that sounds good. I'm just looking at the whole number.
Yeah, I mean, then then they have the O N M costs, which I think we talked about last time. Cost of insurance, I mean, there's cost of financing.
Sure, sure. I mean, from the visit, that the part of the reason we're looking at this is it's a. We want less hassle, no hassle on us. And and the ability to save somebody, like, if we're getting, right now, we're getting thirty grand a year back on. Our panels, right, it was the schools, and that's great. You know, because the electricity rates have gone up so crazy, those didn't. It's just a matter of like, kind of plan the, whether or not we want to make a bet. And what the rates are gonna do when it passes that. So I mean, I'm not, I'm not totally convinced you guys are are totally on board or. Where we should go, should we push the contract forward, let them look at it, and then elaborate on it one more time? Because I think we have, or have to make a decision if we're in or out with doing solar from the beginning. You know, I mean. I I mean, I'm 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 obviously for the idea.
I'm all about saving money too, I just, you know, wanna make sure that. We're doing the right thing, we're actually gonna save money, you know, because we talked about Amaresco, and we see how that worked out for us. You know, so far, the things that not, what worked out the way we were told they were gonna work out. We made nothing, as a matter of fact, I think, probably even lost, lost, lost money on the deal, so.
But this is much different, we're not.
Yeah, we're not putting any money on it, I get it, we're hedging our bet, it's like when you buy fuel oil at the beginning of the year. You know, that's for one year, this is for twenty years.
I mean, the question is, do we have, we're gonna have to decide then, if we have the appetite to even take the risk at this point, based on the numbers we have.
I'm not a hard no, I'm being honest with you, like, I'm still open to it, I just kind of wanna see, you know, like, I'll feel. Sure, comfortable when Melanie says I've gone through the contract and I feel our risk is relatively low and. That, you know, we've, I've covered all the bases and.
So we we've gone through the contract. So you have a special counsel who's going through this.
Oh, so you already had a special.
Yeah, and they've redlined the heck out of it.
So there are some of those changes. So don't think there's harm in cheering for those changes, because if there are things that. The outside can't live with, then that could be the end of it. Maybe we should get some little grounds or something.
So where we are, I mean, it it it's my recommendation that we give the contract to them, the Koreans guys look at it, see what we scan. I think on the next meeting, though, we're gonna need to decide, you know, are we, are we in it or out, even with solar, I think we have kind of come to a point where. Yes, we're willing to take the risk and say, or or if there's any risk, I mean, we're basically trying to get thirty to sixty grand a year back. On what, uh, forty percent of the school? If we can get that money, that's that's great for us, but if we feel like it's not worth. All the hassle and the ballast and concern, like, I think we have to make a decision, I suppose, which that's where we're going. So I think that's where we'll go with this, is we'll just give the contract back, I don't think it requires a vote or anything. Um, and then we'll look at it as soon as you turn it back to us. We'll look at doing either a regular meeting in two weeks, depending how fast you get to that. And then we'll, we'll have this discussion, is that, is that okay with you gentlemen? Or special if we needed to?
We need a special meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, we're, we just discussed that.
Right, um, is that fair?
Condition that they could be proposed back to green space at this point or proceed.
Yeah, these can go to green skies.
If he says that's not comfortable, those are where I want them to be, if if they're ready to be, um.
These are, these are ready to return, um, and we, and I guess we'll be taking those, the big things out of it. Um, I would also do is, um, I'll also, uh, make sure that Mary sends a copy of the contract to both you gentlemen as well. Okay, um, I don't believe that you discussed it, I don't believe there's any vote, um, we'll add it to the next agenda. We'll do, okay.
Thanks, guys.
Really, we appreciate you.
Uh, Hartford, I live in Columbia.
Right, or Dr. Mike's.
Is it takeout?
Go, go to the fun house.
Fun house is great.
Okay, so we're up to new business, uh, the. Consideration of the two hundred twenty five or two thousand twenty five control deer hunt. Uh, we have the hunting schedule attached for deep, we have the tax proposal, construction regulations in Terre Haute. Sure, okay.
Everything went smoothly last year.
Everything that goes through there, since I was asking lines, I know we had issues years past, if somebody walked up to the property, we have addressed that, I did. Stress the people to stay on the map, and he said he had nobody this year. Hopefully, we did that, but, uh, you know, same as as always, I will change the signs that are the beginning of all. Properties to the most current dates, um, I will be here the first Saturday after Labor Day, I believe it is. To vet everybody, uh, after that, it's turned over to the town clerk's office. Uh, I do have a notary coming that day, so they'll notarize the, um, permission slip, the, uh. For the town, so that there's a. Sorry, release, release, thank you. To release in town on top of your permission slip, that sound like the state also releases the town from any, any. You know, being sued for any, for any wrongdoing that happened on the property.
Have you updated, uh, the hunters, especially with Terre Haute, with the new construction that's going on, and it started. Down at the end of it.
I have to update, I did talk to Lisa, I do have to update Matt before she. Uh, makes copies of it in her packet, that she let me give to the guys, so I will, what I'll do is I'll leave the existing and I'll write, I'll draw a red line. Showing the new boundary, so that they know what the new boundary is, so that I do have that. Yes, I already talked to Lisa. Uh, any other question you guys had to me last year was how many, uh, deer? So I did look into the state, the common is the state doesn't put out last year's surveys until the middle, end of August. I know personally, because I do ask the gentleman to tell me, I know two deer were taken off of each property, one, two off of Terre Haute.
Only two?
Only two, that's what they report.
How many hunters here?
Twenty two, between the two properties. Which is.
And they're not required to let you know?
They're required to let the state know, we asked them to let us know, but they're one hundred percent required to let the state know. But the state didn't put their numbers out until the end of that August, I will say yesterday. The only thing they put out so far is the archery and all of that, but only seven animals.
We didn't say we have good hunters.
You guys have any other questions for me, if you weren't happy to answer them? Yeah, we try to keep it, we've been doing it for years, so.
Okay, I'd like to make motion that. For two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six.
Okay, uh, any further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Thanks for being so organized and doing this, I know you guys do a great job. Uh, next up is consideration of a creation of and appointments to a Bethel film committee. So the idea for Bethel Film Committee is it's an ad hoc committee, um, by a full commissioner or like that. They will have their own secretary, they have, you know, we're talking about that, so there's no outward cost to the town. With exception of participating in our marketing budget through economic development and such. The idea is that, um. We have, we have, Milford's the best example, where they have a full blown film commission. And the idea is that they're promoting locations for different kinds of production companies to come out. And, uh, and film in the town, now the idea is they're gonna be bringing in people, uh, eating at the restaurants, being involved, there's a permit fee. See, the idea, you know, each year we might make a little money on it, not a lot. But it's a way to, uh, I I think, put Bethel on the map in that industry. Uh, what they would do is, I think, I think they've already been talking to New Milford to kind of see what, what we would do or something similar. We have something up on our existing website, uh, we would work with the state, because they have a director of, uh. I guess a film commission person at the state level two that they would work with. Um, right now, I'm looking at putting four or maybe five people on the ad hoc commission, committee, uh, committee. Um, I will note that Elon Committee, the minority representation applies. It's not the same as an appointed commission through our charter, it's with state law. What we have here is we have, um, we have, uh, three Democrats, an unaffiliated and a Republican. We can go back and change the ad hoc committee anytime, if we want to add people to it or. Um, the, uh, the folks who are on it, we have Matthew Troy, uh, Matthew Troy teaches in, uh, NYU, teaches film. So he's a, he's a Bethel firefighter, he's around town with me for a while, um, really has been interested in this concept for a long time. We have Janice Christianic from Economic Development, also, you know, good to have her on board to kind of help. You know, work with us and 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 how we might brand Bethel with respect to the marketing and other places for this. Uh, Edward Farrell is actually named Shay Farrell, he is an actor, a former, former actor and producer. Lives in Bethel, um, has had kind of a, a long career, especially in producing listed movies and stuff like that, or lives right downtown here. And then we have, uh, Bob Corin, who is a regular Bethel long range place firefighter. Um, actually has participated in films as an extra, we've been kind of joking around about that. And then we have Bob Kostlovsky, of course, we know Bob from former comptroller of the town. Finance director now, has a big interest in in the idea of, uh, of doing this for that for. I think it's, I think it's a good thing, long term. Again, we try it, it's a film committee, it's a small thing, non big investment, I think the only investment we had was an email address.
I know Rich will have a lot of stuff, they're like, they did film, uh, festivals and stuff like that.
And they are talking about.
Yeah, we think they did a lot of the hardest stuff, so. I think it's fine.
Um, so with that, what what I'd like to do. Is, uh, the first motion will be the creation of the Bethel Ad hoc Bethel Film Committee. Um, so I'm hoping we created a Bethel Ad hoc Film Committee, uh, five members. Second, a further discussion. Um, so next up, um, I make a motion, I'll make a motion that we appoint Matthew Troy, Janice Christianic. Edward Farrell, Bob Corin, and Bob Kostlovsky to the Bethel Film Committee, so. Any further question? Are you done? I'll try mine, so I'll say aye. So Mary will work on that, we'll welcome her. Okay, so we have a, uh, an update from the Public Site Building Commission. So, uh, I think we have an introduction of a new chair as well.
So this is Roger Young, Roger is now the chair. Tom is now vice chair. He decided not to be secretary, I was talking about. So you have one, yeah. Yeah, I mean, those wonderful guys. So now, going forward, Roger will be running down as vice chair. Then, so they were both appointed about the same time, about six months ago, so they're here. So it's with a lot of construction. So it's with a lot of construction, building maintenance experience, building, building systems, all that. And uh, as well as several other new commission members too. You've got a lot of knowledgeable people, which is great. I'm stepping back from being chair because I'm not being reappointed and so. I need to place, I go away, so I gotta get used to it and all this. So I did put a little bullet point together here for an update. And just so you guys know, it says in the charter that we, the Public Site Building Commission, it doesn't say who specifically, but we update the board select the quarter. Doesn't say which quarters, and I tried to stick with the tax, taxes or two. As close to that as I can. I didn't do much in the spring because we don't really, we weren't doing a whole lot, but we were really just a sound. So at the end of, we had a uh, an invitation for Ross Dan for the commission to go do walk around. Well, we didn't walk everywhere. We drove some places to look at some town buildings. Uh, we had just been assigned a couple. And, but we had made a list, and I made a list of buildings I thought we should look at, which was way longer than we could have taken care of in one evening. But I will bring up, we did do, started here at Municipal Center, we went to the animal shelter, highway garage. Went up to the high school to check on the HVAC work that's being done there. And then the list that I made, I had put together a list, like I said. The next building I thought we should stop and look at was South Street Fire Station. And I bring that up because I think the list kind of got out there and they've been asking me, when are we gonna talk about it? So I'm letting you know that early on during my time on the commission, um, people from South Street were coming to, were selected meetings with lists of long lists of things that needed to be upgraded, fixed, whatever, at South Street Fire Station. Biggest thing was um, making the second floor accessible. So the town got a grant with that elevator in. And, and in the process of, okay, we got this much money to do the elevator, spent a little extra squaring off the back of the building, adding a little more space. There are still a whole lot lists of things that need to be fixed, say, at the fire station. So I suggested to the chief and a few others that if they had a list, they should either go through the fire commission or forward it to you. I'm digging around through stuff I've had in my house for way too long.
Well, that should be done. I mean, they should be submitting capital requests or budgets unless it's a emergency.
So I think if it's a, if it's a capital thing, depends on the size of it. And I, I'm not sure why they haven't kind of sort of dropped off and, but I brought it up as what we were doing on our tour. We should go look at the South Street Fire Station. Needed. But they somehow knew that they were on my list. Let's know where it's going. If you have a list, you ought to get, and I'm not sure what the process would be. I'm just letting you know that you might be hearing from them at some point through the fire commission or from that specifically. Not that we're doing anything about it because it's not the science. So we did go, uh, we started here at Municipal Center, kind of going backwards on that little report. Looking at the locker rooms because a lot of people hadn't seen what's existing there in the locker rooms and what some of that concept ideas that have come out more recently. Were a little bit of a standstill with that because we went through the Gordian and B M P with the whole state contract. They start looking at finalizing plans. And they came up with a number that we all thought was kind of high of possibly like ninety-five thousand dollars to come up with construction drawings. But that included a complete building analysis to figure out how many toilets we need. That's we thought that was a little bit excessive. So I emailed them and I haven't got replies as to what specifically are they talking about. But that was something Tom asked, you know, what's the building analysis going to give us? Do we need a building analysis? You know, we look at the building now and how many people are in mostly this section in the north wing on a given day, and the bathrooms that exist and they're inadequate. So why do we need to add a lot more? Even though the gym could possibly hold more people, but we have to discuss that now. So we're looking at. You know, that's the biggest thing of how many toilets do we need? Well, the sinks, a couple of showers. Because that gives us how much space. We then have left to do other things, but to create, the biggest thing that our direct with that is uh, class space or teaching space. They have small classes. They've kind of lost the, the stage as a teaching space because now it just seems to be where everything is stored for theater. So they could use another space for that. We went to the high school to check on the HVAC upgrades. Uh, that's ongoing. The uh, with the grant money that we got to do that, the contractor save more is moving along, getting stuff done. They're, they know that they have to be finished. And we can have two weeks at the most to get out of the building before staff and then students return. If they still have work to do in the building, they're gonna have to go on the afternoon schedule, which they had been doing before school got up to summer. They would work after school, but they would also let the school know where they were working because after school at high school doesn't mean everybody leaves. There's lots of stuff going on. So they're also working on getting the crane in there to pick the units onto the roof when school's not happening. Want to get all that done before school starts. With that, they're still saying their schedule is still kind of going along pretty well. Still should be finished by October. And the budget remains. We haven't gotten any change orders yet. There might be a little one and then a credit change order, but they're still working out what that might be. We have about a hundred and two thousand dollars in contingency. And Dr. Carver let us know that the first request for reimbursement went to DAS last week. And then the other two new projects we were assigned, uh, which we went to on our tour. We went to the animal shelter and we met with Steve Shanley, the animal control officer. And it's generally considered that that building is beyond repair or upgrade. And it looks like we're gonna need.
So wet.
And, and then the behind, you know, where the shelter is, then behind is all wetlands. So even trying to expand or like you could see in some places, which we saw where the uh, the slab is kind of cracked and moving. I have, I think that has to do with we all agreed and they kind of told us too that because Eric and John were on the walk around business. Eric said, yeah, like if it's that bushy vet there, it's, there's not a lot you can do about it. So there was talk about building a new shelter over here and then tearing this one down and creating parking. But we don't know. We're thinking we might have to have some consultant, like a civil engineer, look at that, all of that for us. And decide the size of the building, because John did put together, they did a whole presentation for us. Um, put together like a schematic of what they're looking at for size of the building, pretty much a rectangular shape with plenty of space for inside, outside, an office, bathrooms, all that. Will it fit on that site and not get too close to the wet swampy area? And then still have enough room for parking? So we may need to have a consultant help us with that. We haven't got that far yet.
Or, or a list of different sites potentially.
That's the other thing we were looking into. We were, we had done that. I remember you doing it years ago for the police station. We came up with a bunch of town properties that could be possibilities for where we were gonna put the police station. So coming up with a size of a property and then looking at town properties, what are other possibilities for town properties? Or be considered the shelters that would be easily accessible. It's town probably gets some land, lot of properties, which wouldn't be good.
You don't have many that are.
I think John's kind of worked out this together.
And, and Redding shares that.
I think they do have some reading back and forth, which I don't know if that's gonna continue or.
Hopefully.
Oh, well, okay.
Plan is to keep working.
Okay.
Do they pay? I'm curious.
Um, well, not really very much. No, but uh, the, the, we've talked to them. Not officially, but there's interest in pairing up with us and having the two animal control officers use one shelter together. So they're willing to help out. Again, we have to get it proposal out there. We have to figure out where we put it and then see what they'll do.
Yeah, I think I remember John saying that I think for our next meeting, we'll try to have a list of properties for us to
Yeah.
For, take a look at. And then again, we still may need a civil engineer or someone to look at it with us to see how it would be.
Well, it sounds like if Redding wants to get involved, it would probably have to be kind of close to their border, like fifty-three. Because they're really not gonna be interested to come in. You know, just stony hill or another side of town.
True.
You just have to keep that in mind.
Well, the other side of that is maybe have it be ready. Maybe this will, I'm just saying, have it land there, close to the water. And weed type of. But that's, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Redding's balling is also a lot less than Bethel, so. A couple of dogs a month where we had, like you said, on average, seven to ten.
Yeah. Yeah.
One of the things we, we had talked about was having somebody more centrally located, like uh, out on Ballfield Road, just south of Crow Field in the back.
Right.
You can put a building there and only talking parking spot or two that it needs, right?
Yeah.
Because they're not giving coming in and out, but it's dry.
Right, but I think with parking, we always have to think about what's dogging the fire of us. Because we've done some town buildings where we think, oh, we don't need that much parking.
Well, there's a big lot. There's a, there's a big area for a lot.
Right.
For Ballfield and whatever's going on.
I also have to be careful with Ballfield because their, well, fields are there.
Yeah, but this would be south of Crow Field. So the wells go up on the north side of Crow Field. So there's a, there's an area where they park cars just south on the, back on the wood line. And we actually own the property behind. That's just one of the many spots we've talked about. This is not like, uh, you know. I'm not getting, there are a few places, but they're.
You start saying where you might want to put a building because.
Yeah.
But yeah, we'll have that list and we'll start looking at.
Okay.
Mail on the app.
There was something in, I think it was twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty-nine. The regulations are gonna change, so we may even need a bigger space than we think right now.
Yeah.
Really?
The outdoor space for the animals, the walking and parking.
Well, yeah, we don't, but that, that thing they gave you that didn't have that.
Didn't.
I think it, I think that when they, when they went over it with us, it should be adequate, but they also said at the next meeting that the new regulations that are going to go into effect in twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty-nine, which is down the road, we have to be planning to have those in place. Otherwise, we'd have to upgrade the building if we made it either too small or but those, you know, even looking at making repairs to what's existing, they would have to be done according to those regulations that are going to be put in place.
That would only take effect, right, if you're building a new building after the laws have changed.
You know, I would think your grandfather, right? Didn't they say you're not grandfather?
You would have, you would have to be. They, they can't.
Well, you.
I mean, like the code, the codes can change, but if, if the building's already up, they're not, I mean, imagine the municipal pushback if you went to every single, it is probably and said, hey, you have to have this and they don't have the space to do it. So I guess it would depend on when your project's gonna take place.
I think that's why it came up because we weren't serving that business, right? Shovel ready by twenty twenty-eight.
Correct. But if we were gonna do it before twenty twenty-eight, I don't think those new codes really come into play for us.
Right. Because we're, we were looking at highway garage rooms just being more immediate. And our shelter is usable. They do the best they can there. If they have to, I think they go other places or whatever, but highway garage rooms, they, you know, doesn't jump ahead. Like you bring that up since this point. If there's anything else about the area, we'll talk about it. Highway garage. Eric and John did, there was extensive presentation at our meeting, that last one, that wasn't for with all that they had put together on some old stuff that they found, that we wasn't looking at the roof over the years. They did a new roof. But you can't just put a new roof on. Which is basically what came out of all the information they've collected and put together and that there's some structural issues that need to be dealt with. Yet those aren't completely known, which is why I forwarded these proposals, which we're not gonna consider those completely tonight. So proposal from a structural engineer, from an architect and third proposal is from God does any days looking at what it would cost to design a sprinkler system for that whole area. The first, the first two things that we really need to do is get this is a structural assessment, architectural assessment done. Because that will know what we need to do. Right now, I think they're all, all three of them are in the process of reviewing the insurance thing that you put together. I think they've had some questions.
Hmm.
And I think you've answered them.
Um, on some of them.
And then you're working on the rest. Yes.
Okay. Well, um, looking at retention liability language.
Okay.
Um, especially for professionals relying on them to go out and get grants. And we certainly don't want them to design a roof that paves in at some point and then have you know, not appropriate liability. So um, insurance is limited liability. I'm really focused on that. So yes, I'm, I'm.
You're in the process of going back and forth. What we're looking at with these, at least the two, the, the sprinkler system, I think is kind of a little bit separate in that we need to get the structure taken care of first. And so the uh, the one from Torello and the one from Terratino is going to give us an assessment of what the issues are with the structure so that we can then put together actual plans for work to be done. So this isn't about how the work's gonna get done or what needs to get done. It's basically an assessment of that part's okay, that part's not, this is twisted, that's gotta again replaced. Because the, the building itself, my understanding, the roof, the actual roofing material is integral to the structure of parts of the roof. So you can't just go rip the roofing material off, but the material on, there's some structural things that need to happen. Also, the conduit for the amarisco panels are in that building, hanging from different, attached to different. So we don't know how much that's creating stress issues in there. And what might have to be done to help keep that from creating, if it is creating issues. They just did it. I don't think anybody did any assessment before they went, I mean, you know, conduit. So that's what the proposals are about. Again, we're not looking at those tonight. But at some point, we're going to need to have you approve the proposals, then go to the board of finance for funds to do this. Because you did assign it to us, but we don't have the money, so. And it's, the three proposals are um, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Each one talks about there being reversibles, if there's printing that needs to be done, et cetera. A lot of the printing can, if they send them electronic document, it prints a big set of plans. Uh, there's a big lot of friends there upstairs that should be able to do that. Um, maybe we're looking at adding a couple thousand to each one, so maybe thirty-two thousand total. But we'd have to look at that a little more closely again, but we're gonna have to come back and flush those proposals out more once everything's in place for. If they change their proposals because of the insurance, maybe they might have to add a little something. We don't know.
When, when you guys look at these projects and you determine that you need engineering or architectural review, do you reach out to more than one engineer or are you just getting a bid from a specific engineer?
So that's a good question. These proposals were gotten by uh, Public Works. So Eric and John got these before.
So we'll talk, we'll talk to Eric. I mean, we can talk because we've already had the conversation that, you know, we would like you know, a couple companies to look at it. You know, it doesn't make sense just that one engineer say, unless they've already done work. Like on one of the projects, an engineer done work, so it makes sense to set up all the stuff. But, and I guess that, you know, when Eric comes to us, we can ask him, you know, because I remember he brought this up to us already, like, what's Greg Richard? We were talking about it. And so.
Right.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk to it, yeah.
Right, because I don't think because we're gonna be, we were assigned the project. Because I think when, when Public Works, when Eric and John, and probably other people in Public Works were looking at doing that through their departments, realizing it was gonna be much bigger than. So. so then it's kind of getting handed to us by them. But Tom, I think is going to be the one who will be more involved.
Yeah.
Uh, with I think it's our meetings when the
We're just, we just want to get, we just want to get you know, more than one proposal and unless there's a compelling clause, there's like only one guy who deals with this type of metal, which I don't think is the case at, at the highway garage.
Well, for this specific project, there's a lot of history on this. I think Tarett, Torello and Tarantino have already done engineering
Oh, they have.
prior.
Yeah.
Uh, I think this started and stopped three or four times.
Yeah.
Um, and so their costs compared to, I think it was one other bidder was much, much lower.
Well, it's good.
And they, they already have a knowledge of the
Guys, if you hire somebody new, they're going to have to reinvent the whole process.
That's, that's what we did with the trainers.
Let's spend years, I think, right? I mean, go back several years.
Cause the company that built at least the original for, for the addition for Gacy, they've been trying to get in touch with them and saying, well, you built this building. And this is going on, what can you name?
There, there
Silence.
There was no money left in capital because I recall approving money for the highway roof years ago when
It's like twenty five thousand allocated.
Yeah. So I mean,
That was for the study.
We should really talk to Brad that
For the study.
To find out this, to find out.
That's floating around out there.
There might still be twenty five thousand sitting because we've talked about this. It might even have started with Doug Art. That's ago we've been talking about this.
Depending on how long ago that money might have been spent on all the engineer prior.
I don't know. If it's allocated, it's allocated.
But, but I think there's, but there was a significant amount of money spent on this project.
I mean, we could talk to Brad. Brad will know.
There was basically a contract or maybe that he's in the process. Whatever happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Eric, I don't think Eric brought up to us all the other work that, well, he did talk about some of the work that's been work, meaning not word work, but assessments, looking at it. Needing to come up with the specifics of what has to happen before then an architect, structural engineer says, now we have to do this.
Well, with Tom there, I know we're in good hands.
But let's, we value all the board's equipment, trucks and
Yeah.
There's a issue of a storm that we have or snow or ice load. I'm just saying. It seems like things are getting warmer, but
Yeah.
You could have some catastrophic damage, you know?
No, this is, this is paramount. That's, we have to get this done. It's been kicked out of the road for years and years and years.
Right.
There's no question.
Has to stop.
Yeah.
Which is why we're focusing a little more on this than we are on the animal.
Sure.
That we can get by a little bit, but we still need to make some steps with the animal shelter, uh, doing an assessment on where we got to put.
Sure.
We'll make it two stories. Dogs could have put that stair. So I think that's kind of it. But in the future, you might be hearing word from Roger Tom with, let's say, et cetera, and I'll stick around until
Well, thank you and welcome aboard.
Yeah.
Glad to have you guys.
Thank you guys.
And we really appreciate Nancy because she has a lot of history. We're fairly new kids on the block here. So it's, uh, even though she's not quote appointed, so she's really a great asset. I agree.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
I'll just finish with, as I said, we um during the school renovation project, Johnson and Rockwell Energy Commission got into putting solar panels on the roof. So they're there. So if you're looking at the other solar thing. I, I, the other Energy Commission got kind of melded into the sustainable and yeah. So in looking at that, I guess you're going to have to, if they did some kind of an assessment of because that was her in the middle of construction. They weren't there, but we're putting a new roof on and then the, the Energy Commission shows up and says, we're putting solar panels on these roofs. And we're like, we just put a new roof on. What are we going to do about the warranty? So there was a step by step process that happened with those roofs while we were still working on the construction and renovation of both schools. When the solar panels were installed. And the whole warranty thing was kept in place and they went in inspected it before the solar panels were put in place, warranted. Came back and inspected after the solar panels, took warranty back on and so to look at all that nearly on us. And again, the Energy Commission did all that. We didn't have this, public side building commission had nothing to do with the solar panels, even though we were doing the, the renovations of the
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thanks very much.
Have a nice night.
Thanks. Okay. Next up on hip rate. Uh, we're at the recommendation approval revision of the draft charter revision commission report. Uh, Nick Feeder, are you still online? Are you yelling because you might be asleep by now? I apologize. You have to stay on the line long. Nope, I think he stepped away from his camera. That's okay. Oh, oh, he's still there. Outstanding. Now, is that just signalless Nick or do you need to say something? Your mic doesn't work? I think it looks fine. It's good. Okay. Um, so the, the first order of business with respect to the charter is that, um, as the appointing authority, we have the ability to approve or revise the draft charter revision commission report. Um, if we can basically send it back to the charter revision commission if we like. Um, so we could probably talk through each of the items and decide, you know, how we feel about the report if we want to accept it as is. That would be the first step. Um, personally, I'll, I'll go right out and I'll say, I think the report is comprehensive. I don't, I don't know that we're going to have questions on anything. I don't, but I would, you know, obviously in arcane thoughts, if you want to send something back, otherwise the next step would be we would go through each item. And so we say we could approve the report and then go through each item. We decide what we do and don't want to keep it. Any sense? So does, is there anything that any of you have seen or read that you feel like we should send this back to the charter revision commission?
Um, I, I'd like to add one thing. Uh, and I don't really know, uh, Tim's not here. But maybe Nick could, uh, say where it goes. Uh, let's see. You're with me, please. Dan, if you have, or Brian has any comments, I'd say like
I, I think it's a very comprehensive report. But, you know, I don't think we need to send it back to them. I think we just need to decide what questions. You know, we can report on the ballot is, is what I'm thinking. I don't know. Can you agree with that, Rich or not? Unless it's really
I think you have something you want to add. You want them to go make a consideration and change the charter?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I, I had, uh, something I would like to add to it. Um, and it was well, I'll just come up with it. And I don't know where it fits in. Um, there's under the qualifications for, uh, of members to be elected or, uh, appointed to a board. Um, I'd like to see a clause in there that um individuals cannot have family members on the same board in commission.
Oh. So, so well, we can't, we can't
Why?
They're all, they're all taxpayers. That's actually
That's true. And we're not going to jump out. We're going to let bring it up. Sure.
So now you're bringing it up.
Hey, it's, it's
I was told
it's targeted. That's all.
No, it's not targeted.
Guys, let's have, let's just have, let's have order and let us deal with this. Okay. Let's have order and
All right. So what, what we have, what we have before, so I mean, we're debating of the fact whether we would do it for an elected board and appointed board. So we do know that we can't do it for an elected board. Because I, and, and Nick, I think you're online there.
Yes, I am.
Can't take away somebody's right to run. No matter whether the familial or not, we can't.
All right. Well, then
Yeah.
But that's, that's, that's correct. Especially from an elected position, I would, I would probably need to research on an appointed position. Um, but yeah, eligibility on an elected couldn't be compromised in that fashion.
All right. Well, that, and that answers my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, that, that, well, the other question is with respect to appointed. I, I don't, I don't, I, I mean, we could probably do anything we want. It's a point.
Yep.
But I don't, I don't
Like, let's say this film, you know, you have like a husband and wife.
Sure.
Want to start it. I mean, they should be able to serve together if they're, you know, if they both have a passion for it.
It, it would be up, it would be up to the whoever the appointing authority or first selectmen, board of selectmen at the time to make a decision whether or not they wanted to do that for the appointed board. But I, but I just know that, that the elected thing is you can't because we, we had the same issue with town employees or somebody wanting to run for office. You can't prohibit somebody running for office.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. And, okay, I'm not trying.
Yeah.
Just bring
Yeah, no, I think
I get the question.
No one's upset.
I'm
No, I'm not. Um, no, I don't.
No one's upset.
I, I understand where you're going.
We respect you, Richie.
Um,
Uh, and then my other comments were, uh, I don't support the four year, um, um, term for the selectmen's office.
Right.
And, uh, the, um, to have the fire commission and the, uh, sustainable threshold. Uh, I believe that my opinion, they should still be in, in ordinance, not part of the charter. Uh, ordinance is you can change much easier than the charter.
But we, I guess we don't need to send, what we're just deciding right now is are we sending this back to them or are we just going to decide what we're going to, what questions we're going to put forward? So we can still say that we want to keep it the way it is with the ordinance. We just have to say are we sending it back to them, which I think we're all in agreement that, you know,
We're going to make the decision.
We're going to make the decision.
Okay. So, so Nick, I just want to make sure then the way I understand this, if we basically do a motion to approve the draft of report, it becomes final. Is that correct?
That is correct. And then, uh, a publication requirement would kick in from the time of the board of selectmen's of approval and the report becoming final. Uh, and then you, you don't necessarily need to decide on ballot questions at this moment. That would likely be done at a future board of select.
Okay. So then, um, I move that we approve the draft report of the twenty twenty five charter revision committee. Any further about approving the draft report, meaning we're accepting report?
We're accepting report.
Report.
We'll decide.
This is, we're not, yeah, we're not making decisions in what we're going to do with the report.
Uh,
Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. So the, uh, the draft report's the final report now. Nick, the way I understand now, we can move to the next, even though we're waiting for publication, we can decide what items we do and do not want to, you know, approve or reject from the charter revision report, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, so Nick, I we, we have a, we have a summary of items. And, um, I'm just going to make sure it covers everything because we have a lot of little small items in the charter with respect to something like parks and rec, I mean, little how, how do you, how do you propose we do that as a motion? Do you want to, do we should go and go through the big ones and then whatever's left? We approve together, like all the small changes?
What? Yeah. I mean, it, it's up to you. Whatever makes sense. Uh, if you want to group the more technical in nature, um, ones that you don't see any discussion or issue with all together as, as a separate motion, that, that might be ease of just moving one question and, and, you know, addressing the, the what you deem to be the larger ticket items on a piecemeal basis.
Hmm.
Um, it's really up, up to you as, as the, I, I want to handle that. Sorry to just put it back in your
Yes. How about? Um, we take the easy items and we just, we create a consent calendar. Like we go through and we're going to put each one and say it's going to be on consent. We do one vote. And then we take the ones that we know are the bigger items and we vote individually with that.
That would, that would work.
Okay.
Work.
Um, so what I'll do is I'll go through really quickly with some of the technical items. And then we'll make a motion, you know, to, together to put that on the consent calendar. That means as one of them, I'm going to go through the pages very quickly. This, um, actually take it back. I can't do that till we vote on the big ones. Let's do the big ones first.
Well, how about?
Yeah.
I mean, I I, I myself, um, like when we were talking about, uh, Richie talked about the charter for the fire commission and the charter for sustainable threshold. But I would like to remove that question. I don't
We'll start there then.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, I think we have add, it's, it's, it's a committee that's appointed. You know, it's not like we're stopping it. We're not going to take it away, but I don't see a reason to put either one of those committees in the charter.
Okay. Uh, oh, no, ten people just came up.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I don't know. I mean, that, that, that's, that's one thing.
Could you please mute them? Eric, no. Okay. Um, so let's take those one at a time.
Okay.
Or, okay. So, um, would you like to make a motion regarding the fire commission?
I make a motion that we remove that question from the uh, advisory ballot, we call it.
Um, I guess what we would say is we would reject the recommendation of the commission. Right? The, I think we would be, uh, yeah, moving to reject it or be, excuse me, reject the recommendation of the committee, commission to put the fire commission into the charter. Is that a properly formatted motion, Nick?
He's muted.
Was muted?
He has to unmute.
Yeah. I, I think that's
Is that okay, Molly?
See, so six, seven, hash six.
Yeah.
We're going to remove from we're not going to go
We're, we're rejecting the recommendation and we're not including it in the charter.
Okay.
Nick, does that work? I see you're unmuted.
He's muted. We can't hear him.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Um, you want, you want to add to the C seven dash six?
We're going to do that next.
That was the fire commission.
Fire commission. So now we're going to talk about uh, C seven dash sixteen.
I, I made a motion that we don't go with the recommendation on C seven dash sixteen regarding sustainable threshold. We keep it as a, uh, many as we have now.
Okay. Any further discussion on sustainable level? That I'll try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay? Motion carries?
Um, I'm sorry, were you a nay, Dan?
I'm a nay. That's what the motion gets. Um,
I make a motion that well, I'd like to make the motion to discuss because we didn't really have time to discuss this.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, talk about C six three B. Which is adding a third response option of acceptable to the budget. So I'm just asking that we get the cost six three dash B parenthesis three.
Three, okay. Uh, we, we can, uh, yeah, we can make a motion to.
Discuss it.
Yeah, or we just discuss it. So, um, I know, I know we heard a lot about whether or not the advisor, we won the advisor question and then whether acceptable was worth it or he told us anything. Um, we're finding his chair is not here. No, he, he testified and he said, I don't remember what he said, it's just a revision.
I just think it could kind of confuse things. I mean, if the budget goes down, people either voted for it to go down because it was either too high or too low. I mean, period. You don't vote a budget down and say it's acceptable.
Right.
We know that if the budget passes, it was acceptable to voters or they would have voted no. That's my main point. Like, I just feel like it kind of, it almost makes the board of finances' job even harder because, you know, third may say it was too low, a third may say it was too high, and then you have a third that says acceptable and it went down. So like, where are you going with that? You know, you know what I mean? I just, I don't know. I don't know if it's really necessary.
We have the Charter Revision drop here. Tim, was there, was there any other, anything that came in public hearing that I think be relevant to us right now with respect to the, uh?
Hey, this is. We hear a lot of background. I think it might be Greg.
It's Greg. It's Greg. Yeah.
Okay, good. Um, the, the Charter Revision Commission followed the lead of the prior Charter Revision Commission that had added a third response. And that was, I, I think they were saying too high, too low, or just right. Um, so we, we kind of followed their lead, but we, we thought just right. You know, just, I think you just need a single, a single response. Um, and, and when we see referendums for the, for the budget, very often you see many more people voting on the, on the main question and then not answering the advisory questions at all. And perhaps those are the people who think that the budget is neither too high nor too low, so they don't answer the question at all.
Yeah, I feel there's been more, not that it, that's been that controversial. It's probably more people who didn't want the question than did. I think we've been trying to look to the board of finance and everybody else and see, hey, is this something really that they want or it's useful? I don't think it makes a difference either way. I don't think, personally, I'm kind of agnostic on it. But we feel if it's confusing, you know, I'm, I'm okay with letting it go.
I guess, I guess, just, I guess my point is, is if the budget goes down, you got to know why it went down.
Yep.
It's either going to go down because it was too high.
Yeah.
Or it was too low. And people have the right to say that. People who vote yes have accepted the budget, you know, it was in a, you know, and they can, they can still say it was too high. So if they thought that they were kind of like, you know, they didn't, you know, they just vote too high. And then you still get a gauge on.
Or too low.
Or too low. No, and I said that earlier. You know, they could do either way and you still get a gauge. I just feel just right kind of muddies the waters a little bit, is correct. Okay, I mean.
I think, I think that was the conversation though, at the time they were having. It's like.
I, I remember that when they discussed it back in two thousand.
Yeah, if the budget.
I was actually, I remember that.
It was more like if the budget passed, as the question is, if some people say it's acceptable, because if you, who don't vote too high or too low, I think you're wanting to thank me. But to your point, I don't know if we get any benefit.
They voted yes.
Yeah. But how do you feel?
Uh, uh, yeah. I agree with, you know, you're voting, yes, you, you're accepting it the way it is.
Okay. Um, well, it sounds like, uh, we're already making a motion. Um, do you want to make that one, Rich, or?
Uh, I'm making, you know, we remove, uh, six, uh, C six slash three B. For the add.
Pressing three, yeah. How about this?
C six dash three B, parenthesis three.
Okay.
That's what it is. You got to put the parentheses.
So we're rejecting.
Yes.
Rejecting the acceptable, once we vote, too much or too high, too low with the motion. I will second the motion. Um, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? That, that, that's a, a vote for rejection. You didn't say anything about it, seeing your.
Well, you made the motion, so he wants to reject.
Yeah, I just want to make sure he actually said, you were still supposed to vote on it, but, you know. Oh, good. All right. I want that one.
I made, I made the motion.
Yes.
Can we just, uh, talk about expanding the Public Utility Commission?
Sure.
I'm not necessarily against it. I mean,
Yeah, I'm not.
I, I don't really, I mean, being on the Public Utility Commission, it has never been a partisan commission, I think. You know, especially when you have a higher director who, you know, assisting and sometimes we have a hard time getting a quorum on it. I mean, I don't know what you think, Richie, whether you think it's a good idea to expand it. I mean, you've been on it longer than any of us.
Yeah, uh, it was, the, the thought behind it was because of the, the technology now required for the water. Uh, that we were looking to, uh, get some other people on the commission that might have more of a chemical background or, or knowledge of, uh, some of the other requirements, uh, the state is putting before us. So, um, that, and it does help with the quorum and all that, but, uh, it was mainly to, uh, get some more people with expertise, uh, on the commission. I'm, I'm in favor.
Fine. I'm fine. Yeah, I think it's, it's not that big a, big a deal.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make the motion then. Um, I make the motion that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission to add the Public Utility Commission to seven members. For seconds. Any further discussion? Okay. On favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously.
So we should probably go to the first two, not, right?
Want to go to like? So first off, I'm going to make a motion. Actually, we'll just go through each one because we can do this fast enough. Um, I move that we, uh, accept a recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission to allow those used in purchasing cooperatives. And that's going to be in section, uh, C eight dash four, I. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Accepted. Motion carries. Um, we'll do the next one.
Prohibit members of the Board of Finance from serving on other boards. Is that appointed boards too? They can't serve on?
Uh, that's true. On, on other boards in general. And I think the, um, um, we have Tim Beeble still. Well, actually Nick, last Nick. Then what were the other boards that say that, that keep people from serving on other boards? There was another one.
Um, well, I, I remember we voted against the Board of Assessment Appeals. Um, it's, I want to say planning and zoning, but I can bring up the draft charter real quick.
Yeah, ba- basically the question was having like board of finance on other boards and, um, it, it does muddy the waters. The power of it. If you're like us, it'd be the same thing as a, a selectman serving on a board with a vote. Like none of the selectmen on the boards with a vote. And I, I don't think the board of finance should be in that situation either. So I'm, I'm certainly in favor of it. Any against it?
No, I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I make a motion that we, uh, accept the recommendation on C two dash five prohibiting members of the Board of Finance from serving on other boards.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is C six dash three B. I would accept a motion to approv- approve, excuse me, accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission. Uh, for the referendum to be held ten to fifteen days after the annual town meeting. For a second. This came from, um, voter registrar, Tim, really, was because of, uh, looking at the timing. Did you want to add anything, Tim?
Well, only, only that this language goes back to the days when we had machine votes. And so, once we, we moved to paper ballots, there's a timeframe for actually getting them printed and getting them back. So we were running into difficulties when, um, uh, ballots were not getting back to us in time to actually hold the referendum. So we were, we were getting very concerned about that. So we had to expand the timeframe.
Okay. Um. Yeah, okay.
So you're saying ten to fifteen days is enough time to get the paper ballots?
Yes.
I make the motion that we approve C six dash three dash B parenthesis one, budget referendum to be held ten to fifteen days after annual town meeting.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, next up, um, I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission for C six dash five E. Special referendum to be held within ten to fifteen days after certification. Um, any comments, Tim? It's pretty much the same thing.
Um, yeah, no, no, no further comment. No.
Okay. Fair enough. Um, did I have a second on that? I did? Okay. That's, which one favors, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, next up to the, uh, lengthy selection term to four years. It's a C three dash four. Um, I'll make the motion so we can discuss it, obviously. Um, I move that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission for C three dash four to lengthen the board of selectmen term to four years. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay. So, um, obviously this has been the most, most controversial thing. Obviously I've been, I've been supporting it for a lot of reasons. Um, the number one reason isn't to, it's, it's not to allow somebody to get better at the job necessarily. Yes, they're going to run up period in understanding the job. A four-year term is important to get things carried through over time. And it's important because we want to attract the best possible candidates. Things are more complex and we do not have a town manager position or a town ministry, an operations person. That I think forces, really we need to be focused on a much better quality of candidate. And, and listening to some of the reasons not to have it, gave me exactly the reasons why we should. The fact that we looked back over time and so many people, like it's up and down and so many people get two-year terms over the, over the years is not a, a measure of what the voters can do or the power. It's instability in government. Things are much more complicated than they've ever been. And a four-year term, I think, allows us to have long-term planning in the town, whoever it is in the future. So I've been, I've been, you know, pushing for a four-year term here for some time because it's the right thing for the long-term vision of the town. That's it. And we need to make that position something people want to do. Yeah, they want a young, energetic MBA type to come in and do the job for four years or try for it, whatever. That they can, they can take the risk of doing it for four years. So that, that's why, the biggest reason I pushed for it. That's kind of my take on it.
If the Charter Commission, uh, I mean, they brought it forward. And the fact that it was a split vote tells me that, you know, it's an incredibly important decision. Um, for myself, you know, I'm kind of split. I understand, you know, your point of view and I understand Richie's point of view. And, you know, my, my honor, and based on the amount of conversations people have had with me, uh, listened to both sides and I see facial gestures right now. My, my, my personal feelings on it is that if this wasn't going to go forward to the voters, it should have been killed in the Charter Revision. They were nonpart, they were, they were, they were a board of different groups and they put it forward. And I think that a decision this big, the voters will have their say. And, you know, I, although I don't know how I'm going to vote on the issue, I will let the voters have their say on the issue.
Well, I, I was against it. Um, I, I think that everybody's doing a good job. They'll get elected the, the following year, uh, to do that. And I've, the former Charter Revision, they, uh, voted against it to move it forward. And then this, uh, Charter Revision voted for it to, to, to move it forward. So, um, I want to look on that motion.
I, I totally, I totally respect your opinion and I, I may vote nonpart in the ballots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The point is, is that they, 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 they brought it forward to us and it's a huge decision.
It is.
It's a huge decision.
Uh, it, it's also worth saying for the record again, this does not take effect right away. It's twenty twenty-seven. It doesn't happen in the next.
Cycle.
Yeah, so whatever the next.
It's like even takes a time.
If it takes a time, if it, if it happens, it's going to be clear that. Um, that'll be probably in how we put it on the ballot.
Should be a little note on the ballot. I agree with you.
True.
Um. All right. I mean, I appreciate moving towards the voters. I think that, that's, you know, if people can.
Let the voters have their say.
Campaign against it if they want to. And, uh, okay.
All right. Like I said, I'm not. I'm not pushing it forward because I'm in support of it.
Understood.
Okay. I just want that clear. You might think that the voters, the voters had, let the voters have their say on that.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on the four-year term? Okay. But now, try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, that's one nay. Motion carries. Okay, so. Next up. Um. I make a motion that we approve the process in C seven dash five. Uh, summary from the appointed board and the process for the board of selectmen to remove an appointed member of a board or commission. No second. Okay. Now this one may take, show you. Nick, do you want to do a quick rundown on what that one is, just so it's on the record? I know we've been through it.
Sure. Let me just bring up C seven five. So essentially, C seven five would only, um, apply to resignations and removals of appointed boards. And this was something that was jockeyed about a bit during the last Charter Revision Commission, um, the report that did not go forward. Um, and it, it, it's essentially an echoing problem, uh, that these commissions heard wherein members of appointed boards were not able to be removed. Um, so this mechanism provides, uh, differing scenarios when they can be um, for cause and, and creates a whole process and procedure for, for doing so and is proposed to be codified, um, in, in, in the, in the chart.
Okay. Any further?
Uh, some of the items for, uh, remo- potential removal include the wilful, wilful neglect of duty, the inability to serve, no longer qualified as a resident elector, um, conviction of a felony under abandonment of office. Uh, these are all things that could be deemed just cause for removal by the board of selectmen.
Okay. Tim? Did we have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, all in favor? Is there discussion still?
Just, just a question. Is there, there any, uh, Nick, uh, like appeals, like, are they able to like, can appeal the decision? I mean, like, is just caused, like, completely outlined?
There would, there would be, uh, the ability to be heard at a hearing. Um, so this would prompt up, or prompt a, a hearing before the board of selectmen. And just cause is outlined as, as I recited. Um, there is probably likely some, some case law dealing with just cause or good cause in, in this matter. Um, but we, we generally kind of spelled out what those items would, would amount to within the, the amendment.
Otherwise, it's our appointment. We have, we have to move, except that area. Yeah, so there's two pros. Okay. But then I'll try my own favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Okay. Um, so Nick, I think what I'm going to do is go a once through to make sure we got everything in the actual draft document. Because the, uh.
We didn't get, we have to go to updating to draft titles.
Yeah, well, with that, so department names, town functions. I just don't want to miss anything. I'm, I feel like we might miss those. So I do a quick run-through. I think I'll catch those. Yeah, the big, the big things, but I guess, okay, so creating new departments or updated names. We have to, um, go through each one of those, I think, right?
Yeah, and the document, you, you just had the sum, you're, you're reading off the summary that was provided. I think the document that, that Tim had drafted. Um, so, and give you each section.
Yeah, I'm going to go through the sections just to make sure we do this. So let's, let's do this and, I mean, the first thing we run into is a replacement of his with their. So I know that's the changing the, the, the gender has been something everybody's talked about. Um, I, I, I don't have any particular problem with it in the sense that I know why folks believe it politically, but I think if we say there on all this versus his or hers, it's, it's more referring to the position or the office and how many different people have tried to be there. So for instance, if you're talking about a first electman, their choice is referring to any first electman who's in that role. It's the same thing with eligibility for office. No person shall be eligible for election in any town office. No person shall be eligible for election in any town office who's not a, uh, not at the time of their election a resident. I think it's referring to multiple people. So I don't have any problem with it either way, but I, I'm not looking at it. I know that was part of the reason. Any, any other thoughts on how you guys might feel about?
Doesn't really matter.
It doesn't really matter. I mean, from that point, we could say, don't change it. Or we can change it. I don't know.
Uh, how were the comments about that issue, uh, Tim? On your whole procedures?
Yeah, I mean. I mean, from my point of view. We were. Changing the pronouns, not for political reasons. Um, but really for readability of the charter. Because throughout the charter right now. It's peppered with. He slash she. And so as you, as you read sentences with he slash. She in them and his, his, her, um, it, it just becomes awkward in reading it. And. From my point of view, it just seemed to be easier to read when you change interchange those he, she's to theirs and they. And of course, and Joan, Joan Bradley on the, on the commission is a former English teacher and of course she's. She was horrified by using, using they when we're referring to a single person. So.
Yeah. So what do you gentlemen think? Um, well, how about I, I'll make the motion. I move that we replace references to his, her. Or excuse me, he, she gender references with they, their, them.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimous. Okay. Um, so we got that another way. Okay, so I'm, I'm going to go through. Nick, if you'll follow along with me, I'm going to start at C two dash five. Eligible for office. We, uh. You probably need your whole piece because we went and talked about the Board of Finance. But I think the proper motion would be to accept the change to C two dash five eligibility office. In the Charter Revision Commission. For, uh, not allowing employees of the town to serve on the Voting Commission. Except authorized ex officio non-voting members as per the Connecticut General Statutes. In addition, members of the Board of Finance shall not concurrently serve on an elected or appointed minutes board or commission during the time of office. Have a second. That's the whole piece. I get that right, Nick?
That is correct, Dan.
Okay. Um, well, yeah, but I know that's probably we did is we went off the summary and we approved just the Board of Finance.
Oh.
We did not approve the whole change because we didn't do it all through the draft. I went through all of the drafts. So with that, we have a motion. Um, I'll try my mind's all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we accept that. And C that, and C three dash three. And, uh, we did. We did B. We did not do the whole thing. So with that, under vacancies. Under C three dash three. Talk, uh, did we actually talk about how to fill the vacancy of that one, Nick? How long we begin? We have the response, but for minimum. We, so we didn't do the main one, three dash three A. That's what we did.
Correct. Yeah. There's some, there's some gender switches within that section, but then the crux of it towards the end of C three dash three A.
Okay. So, uh, so with, uh, what I, what, uh, I recommend, we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission in section C three dash three. That if a vacancy has not been filled by the Board of Selectmen within 60 days and the vacancy is of the member of the Board of Commission. Then either the Board of Selectmen or the remaining members of such Board of Commission shall fill the vacancy. If the remaining members of such Board of Commission fill said vacancy. They shall do so by recommending said candidate to the Board of Selectmen for the Board of Selectmen's official appointment. Do I have a second? Then we can discuss it. Thank you. Okay. And Nick, basically this just cleans up the language to make sure that the Board of Selectmen's making the appointment, not. The actual. Committee, right?
Correct. It is the first line of business would be the Board of Selectmen.
Exactly. Okay. Um, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. That's accepted.
And.
Yes.
And guy, I, I just, I just wanted to kind of go back if we could to, to C two dash five. And, and Nick maybe could weigh in on this too. I don't recall that we added in and allowed town employees to serve on planning and zoning. We, we added the language. Or we have a language except as an ex officio member, but. I, I think this change makes, allows town employees to go on planning and zoning.
So, um, okay, so basically we, we, as we approved it. The language ate normally any employee of the town serving planning zone commission except as an authorized ex officio non-voting member. So. That's interesting. Uh, town and may any employee. Sounds serve of the planning. Except as a, so we're saying they can't.
There was an actual strike through on the Planning and Zoning Commission. As a result of, I believe, the Connecticut General Statute. And then. The ad was, was the language you, you, you read.
Right. So I guess, I guess to, to Tim's point, if somebody is elected. To it. They should, we should be able to, they should be able to elect a P and Z. We can't prohibit a town employee from running for office.
Yeah, but I think, no, they, so the, the state statute. Says that the Charter can prohibit town employees from serving on land use boards.
Okay.
And so this strikeout. Basically opens the door for town employees to serve on planning and zoning, which I don't think was ever the intention of, of this commission.
No, the, the language below it, Tim.
Yeah.
Is exempted. So it's, it struck, it struck out planning and zoning commission.
Oh, I see what you have. Yes.
Bottom says, nor may any employee of the town serve on the planning zoning commission. Except as authorized ex officio non-voting members, which really that covers public works.
Right.
Which by the state law says he's a member of the planning zoning commission.
Okay, but that makes, that makes sense. Thank you for agreeing. Yeah. Correct. It basically it just makes the, the paragraph read correctly.
Right. Okay. Um, all right. And, um, next up is, uh, section. Okay, I move that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission and section C three dash three vacancy. Uh, I'm sorry, three dash three C isn't Charlie. Uh. And, and the language is vacancies on the Board of Selectmen except for a vacancy in the office of first selectmen pursuant to. Section C five dash four. Currently four of this charter shall be filled in the same manner prescribed in the statutes. Um, this gets back to just. Highlighting the fact that for the Board of Selectmen, excuse me, for the Office of Ever Selectmen. It is filled prescribed by the acting for selectmen. When a vacancy arises. So it's that, that whole process that it's the acting for selectmen. Did I get that right, Nick?
That, that's cor, that's correct. So it just drew, drew reference for clarity purposes essentially to another section that allowed vacancies of first select.
Very good. Um, so I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, so we accept that. We did, we accept that. Um, okay, so I move that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission. For section C three dash six, Board of Education. Um, basically it, it outlines that the member shall have, shall serve overlapping terms. That was just something that was left out that the Board of Education should have overlapping terms. Um, go a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Um. Okay, this is kind of item. Uh, I move that we, that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission for section. C three dash twelve Town Clerk. We're striking the beginning of the sentence where it says, beginning with the regular town election of 2009. And then we're just, uh, we're striking that section. Uh, because we don't need that anymore. It's a technical change. Any discussion? Do I have a second on that? Wait, I can segment that. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. We did this one, uh. Actually, take it back. So, um, I move that we accept the recommendation of Charter Revision Commission for section C four dash four. Highway Renact Ordinance is section B and. D. Um, basically what we've added here is language that says, or another medium consistent with the requirements of Connecticut General Statutes. How we promote these. So right now, we have newspapers in general, solar circulation. And we're allowing another medium consistent with the requirements of Connecticut General Statutes. It's basically opening up that if the statute someday say we can do it on our website, we can do it. Any, um.
Dan, if I could, if I could add, that, that is actually. That change is in multiple sections, not only these two here, but C four, four B. And the C four, five A, C eight thirteen, C four. Double I, C ten two G. And C ten. Four A. And it's all for the same purpose. Essentially, it addresses the public newspaper publication requirement. Uh, and allows the town leniency if it's changed by state statute. Because remember again. You can't contradict state statute within the charter. So if that publication requirement is changed statutorily. It, it, it's addressed in numerous sections as I just recited in, within the charter.
So with that, I amend my motion to include all the, uh, items of the Charter that have that, that the, uh, town, excuse me, the special counsel mentioned. Will you amend your second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Um. I'm on the line. So here we go. Okay. Uh, I make a motion that we accept the, uh. Recommendation of Charter Revision Commission for section C four dash seven, additional powers. In, uh, in sub paragraph E, we're changing the word appointed to appointed offices. Have a second? Any further discussion? Now, carry mine. It's all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, um, I move to accept the rec, accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission. For section C six dash one. Composition, and that would be some section C. Uh, and strike the word budget in annual town budget meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
So the reason this was done was kind of keep things consistent that at the town, town meeting, we're able to do other things. It's not just the budget. What's the annual town meeting is we're doing much. So it's a technical frame. With that, um, I'll try my minds on favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I move that we accept the, uh, recommendation of Charter Revision Commission for section C six dash two procedure. Uh. Basically, um, the. Town meeting is governed by the Robert rules of order. That's in our charter currently. However, that kind of creates a really weird thing because. If we're following Robert's rules, we have to elect a secretary every time that we do town meeting. We always have the town clerk be that secretary. So what it does is it changes the paragraph to read. The official rules for the procedure of any town meeting shall be Robert's rules of order. The town clerk shall automatically serve as the secretary at a town meeting. In the event the town clerk is unable to attend a town meeting, the town clerk may recommend a clerk pro tempore. To serve as a secretary, subject to their election at town meeting. So basically it just establishes that town clerk is one to be on. That's what carries. Second, uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Um, and I'll say this, uh, I, I should make this, I know we went back and we. We took budget meeting out of other sections, Nick.
Correct.
I'll make the motion, um, that wherever we have annual town budget meeting. We accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission to strike budget. Do you have a second? Any discussion there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, okay, so. We did not do the annual town meeting piece. Okay, so I make the mo, I make the motion that we accept the recommendation of Charter Revision Commission for section C dash. Excuse me, C six dash three. Uh, sub paragraph A. That. The annual town budget, excuse me, annual town meeting shall be held on one of the first fourteen days. We're striking seven day, uh, of April. At the discretion of the Board of Selectmen with the publications known to apply by law. We're adding, except as otherwise provided by law, the annual town meeting shall serve as the town's budget meeting. And they also include transaction of business profit to come before such meeting. Um, and the date of such meeting shall be the Board of Selectmen, January fifteenth of each year. We're adding the, the TH there as a technical change. We're also making a couple of, I'll, I'll include in section two and three, we're making some capitalization. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Um. Nick, is it appropriate just to make a motion for capitalization changes? As technical?
Yeah, I, I think so. And that, as recited in the, the draft report.
Okay. I move that capitalization changes recommended by the Board of. Uh, excuse me, Charter Revision Commission, um, that we accept them in the draft report. So a second.
Or actually, Dan, if I could correct it, it's now a final report.
It is. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I make the motion. Accept the, um. Capitalization changes throughout the final report of the Charter Revision Commission. Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Uh, I make the motion that we. Make sure I get this right. Okay. Make the motion that we approve the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission for section. C six dash three subsection five. And there's new language where, um, this is about the, uh, how the meeting is adjourned. Uh, the new language is when the proposed budget has been approved and submitted or revised. The budget meeting shall be adjourned, moving the proposed budget for final vote and approval by the budget referendum. Uh, there was a piece in there that said it was automatically adjourned. That technically creates an issue where, once you get the budget approved, then. Meeting is over and it, it needs to be actually adjourned. Hold on. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? None? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Um. I move that we. Accept the recommendation of Charter Revision Commission for section C six dash three. Section one. Um, that the machine vote will be not less than 10 days. That is a change from seven. Um, and voting for the budget reaffirm shall occur at the designated polling places between the hours of six AM and eight PM. Okay, um. And so, uh, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Accepted. Uh, next up, we got rid of that, that protected. Capitalization. Budget. Okay. Um, I move that we accept the recommendation of Charter Revision Commission, section C six dash five petition for overrule. And that would be subsection E. And again, we're changing, um, the language from seven days to 10, not, excuse me, 10 days, not more than. Fifteen days excluding Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays after the certification of the, uh, commission. Again, this was a recommendation from the, uh, bone registrars. Do I have a second? Okay. Any, um, any further discussion on that? With, uh, I'll try my mind's all in favor, say aye. Aye. And no extensions. Make sure you get motion carries. It's done. Um, okay. This is, this one's important. Uh, I move that we accept the recommendation of the budget, excuse me. I move that we accept recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission, section C six dash eight, action requiring referendum. And I'm going to read the, the new language because basically what we're doing is, um, removing the requirement to fund. Excuse me, have a referendum for, uh, utility projects that are funded exclusively through user fees, grants and loans. And we're changing the capital fee project amount. Uh, that have capital expenditures to $2 million or more. So I'm going to read the language. Any proposed capital expenditure of $1 million or more, except capital utility projects that are funded by exclusively through. User fees, grants and/or loans shall be submitted to the persons qualified to vote thereon for a vote by voting machine. And vote to be conducted in accordance with the terms of section seven dash seven and seven dash nine B of the Connecticut General Statutes. Capital utility projects as described herein that have proposed capital expenditures of $2 million or more. Shall be submitted to persons qualified to vote thereon for a vote by voting machine in accordance with the above described statutory sections. Have a second.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
Just for clarification. We're raising the 1 million to two. Just for clarification, we're raising the one million to two, two million. Anything over two million, we need a vote. Is that correct?
So let me make sure. So basically, any proposed capital expenditure of one million or more is capital, capital utility projects funded by user fees and grants for loans. Yeah, so no, so it's one million. Hold on.
That that was supposed to be changed to the two million.
Am I missing something here?
No, so it's, it's the trigger really on the capital utility projects changes from one million to two million.
Ah, capital utility project. Yes, 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 yes. That's separate. Yeah. So if it's a capital utility project, it's a million dollars unless there's exclusively funded through fees.
He just said capital utility project is too much.
Right. Well, I'll break this. Nick, run me through this. "Any proposed capital expenditure of one million dollars or more."
So one million dollars or more capital expenditure triggers a referendum.
Okay.
Two million dollars would trigger a referendum if it were a capital utility project, or more than two million dollars on a capital utility project funded exclusively through user fees, grants, or loans. The referendum trigger is, has been raised.
Gotcha.
There's two separate things there. It's one is the regular one million is for anything in the town, and the other is two million for the UC.
Correct. Essentially, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. Nice discussion. We have a motion on table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye, motion carries. Okay. We didn't, I don't think we really did this one yet, but I move we accept the recommendation of Charter Revision Commission for Section C seven dash one, appointed boards, appointments by Board of Selectmen. We will be changing, and it's actually through other ones, Nick. We're going to be changing Park to Parks. So it's Parks and Recreation Commission, and also changing wherever it says appointed boards, we're going to change it to appointed boards. Also, there's in this, in the, in the same section, we're changing the two ors to and, which are technical changes. And in Section C, we are changing, "All members of the appointed boards and commissions shall be resident electors of the town, and any person ceasing to be a resident and elector of said town shall thereupon cease to hold the appointed position in the respective board or commission." Do you have a second on the language? And I can explain that too.
Second.
So basically, what we're doing here is we're cleaning it up that if, on an appointed board, the resident elector leaves, they're automatically not a member of the board anymore. We're not waiting to require presentations. We're not doing due process. If they're clearly, they've moved out of town, away. We're making that easier. Does that make sense to everybody?
I have a question. The two fire chiefs in town currently, they're technically ex official members, not members of the board. So is that okay in that section?
Yeah, yes. I mean, they can be. Because, because those boards, we're saying they're members of the boards as if ex official members. So we can put an ex official member to any board because of either position. Right? That doesn't, I don't think that prohibits this. Am I getting that right, Nick?
Yes, I would, I would read that the same way as you are, is that it would not apply to the ex official members.
Okay. Um, that's probably going to be up to working with the voter registrar and.
So they would have to change.
Well, we actually didn't put that in here. That would be, I mean, obviously, with the appointed boards, you know who leaves and they're not technically a resident.
It's kind of.
Or, or excuse me, an elector. Actually, well, that is, I mean, technically, right, Tim, they would have to not be elector. I mean, they have to change your voter registration.
Right. So the, so a best example of this is if someone who's, lives in Bethel, is on an appointed board, moves to Southbury and registers to vote in Southbury, the registrar's office gets notification immediately because we've got a statewide registration system. So we would know when they're leaving. I think the problem might be.
What do you do with this? What do you do with a student who might get elected to a board and still wants to vote at college, but is attending all their meetings via Zoom?
Well, they, they shouldn't, they shouldn't register in another state. They, they should continue to be a voter in Bethel and send in an absentee ballot.
Which students are allowed to remain elected. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on that or any comments? With that, I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we already did Section C dash five in its entirety. We did Section C seven dash six. C seven's covered. Okay, we did C seven dash eleven. Okay. I move that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission for Section C seven dash fifteen, Insurance Pension Plan Commissions, and it's subparagraph A. And all we're adding is that the, the members on the Insurance Pension Plan Commission shall serve overlapping terms. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Motion carries. We've already done C seven sixteen, we rejected. That was it's been in Bethel. Okay. Here we go. I, I move that we, excuse me, I move that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission for Section C eight dash one, Section A. And this is where we're changing the name of Comptroller Stricken to Finance Director. Director of Civil Preparedness is created as Stricken, it's Emergency Management Director. Police Departments is, is Stricken. And then down the line, Economic Development Director, along with the Public, excuse me, Police Department and Department of Public Utilities is added. Motion, I'd like a second for discussion. Okay. So basically, what this does is it changes the name of Comptroller, changes the name of the Civil Preparedness, the Police Department. It clarifies that Department of Public Utilities is now a separate entity, which has been there for a while. It also makes Economic Development Director a position that we hire officially. Right now, that's Monsergeant, or Monsergeant. It's done through, it's not in the charter, but we're adding it. So just want to make sure we understand that's what we're doing. Any other discussion? Do we have a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. We're making progress. You did that. Okay. Oh, I got some, something came out backwards here. Okay, we did that. We did that. Do we do C seven dash two yet? No, okay. Okay, so I recommend we accept the recommendation of the dash two, in terms of office. Section B, basically what it does is it clarifies with vacancies that have not filled by the Selectmen of the six of the Selectmen, or the remaining members of such Board of Commissions shall fill the vacancies. The way the charter reads, Nick, they're moved in just the board technically. So it clears up that we can still make that appointment. Further, it says, "If the remaining members of such Board of Commissions fill said vacancy, they shall do so by recommending said candidate to the Board of Selectmen for the Board of Selectmen's official appointment." Basically, any appointment really needs to be the Board of Selectmen, even if they're the ones who are pushing it separately. Okay? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I totally got one of these out of line. I don't want to do it, but. Okay. I move that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission for Section C eight dash three, Tax Collector. Section A, and we're adding B, we're renumbering A, sorry, adding B. And the, the addition is, "A tax collector may be removed from office by the Board of Selectmen for good cause." Do I get a second for discussion? Right now, if you read the charter, the tax collector is a indefinite appointment. There's no way to get rid of a tax collector from LPs and something like that. So the tax collector would have an indefinite term still. But if the, the Board of Selectmen found a reason or cause, we can remove the tax collector. And the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority in the first place. So that good cause would be they have to, they have to have a reason, probably due process. Any questions? Okay. Without trying my mind, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I recommend we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission for Section C eight dash four, Assessor. It's a similar change. We're, we're changing the first paragraph to A and adding B. "The assessor may be removed from the office by the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance for good cause, provided that such removal shall have the approval of a majority of the Board of Selectmen and a majority of the full Board of Finance." And, and that is spelled out, two for the Board of Selectmen and four for the Board of Finance. Again, you, you don't want to remove an assessor, but they have an indefinite term, there's no way. So that is added. Do I have a second for that? All in favor, say aye. Aye. And the motion carries. Nick, when I made the motion before about the positions of the Director of Civil Preparedness, Emergency Management, all that, I didn't make it to strike through the whole thing. So I think what I need to do is we change, that's the one we change, finance director. So I move that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission to change the Director of Civil Preparedness to Emergency Management Director and the title of Comptroller to Finance Director throughout the entire final report of Charter Revision Commission. Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay. It's a lot of this. Oh, okay, so under, I make a, a motion that we accept the recommendation of Charter Revision Commission for C eight dash five. We're going to renumber the first paragraph A per letter, and we're going to add a B, "The Emergency Management Director may be removed from the office of the Board of Selectmen for good cause." Do I have a second? Any discussion? Without trying my mind, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. C eight dash six, Director of Health. I make the motion, excuse me. I make the motion that we accept the recommendation of Charter Revision Commission for C eight dash six, Director of Health, to strike out in Section A, Section nineteen A two hundred of the Connecticut Generals, excuse me. Yeah, Section nineteen A two hundred of the, and it refers to the statutes. Basically, by doing that, if that section ever changes, it's still the Connecticut General Statutes that drives the appointment of a health director. So we were just cleaning up by removing the statute, so it's likely to change. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. And, okay, motion carries. I also make the motion that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission for Section C eight dash six, Director of Health, Section B. And we're adding at the end, "The Town Sanitarium may be removed from the office by the Board of Selectmen for good cause." Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay. I make a motion, we accept the recommendation from the Board of, excuse me, the Charter Revision Commission for Department of Public Works in, in striking out, I'll just read the paragraph. "There shall be a Department of Public Works which shall have encompassed the powers and duties." We're striking out of the Town Water Department, Town Department of Roads, and Town Sewer Department, and further powers and duties by the Board of Selectmen may grant to the department. And we're adding, including but not limiting to, "The maintenance of town roads and fleet vehicles and maintenance of town buildings and further powers and duties, Board of Selectmen may grant to the department." We're doing that because, you know, the Water Department has been made a separate entity, and it clarifies what we're adding to the duties of the Public Works. Okay. Any discussion? With that, I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Done this. Okay. We did this. We accepted purchasing agreements, upper agreements. We've done that. Okay. I make the motion that we approve the recommendation of the Charter Revision to add Section C eight dash one for Department of Public Utilities. It's establishing the department. Any reasons such. "There shall be a Department of Public Utilities which shall have encompassed the powers and duties of the Town of Water and Sewer Department for further powers and duties as the Board of Selectmen may grant said department. The Board of Selectmen shall appoint a person who shall also be licensed by the State of Connecticut as a professional engineer to be the Director of Public Utilities. Said Director shall be administrative head of the Public Utilities Department and shall be responsible for the efficacy, the efficiency, discipline, and good conduct of the Department's operation within the town. The Director of Public Utilities shall organize public utilities operations such manner that they shall be most economically efficient." So we're establishing this side. Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Nick, am I allowed just to make the motion to accept it as written in the draft report to make it easy instead of reading it? Okay. I make the motion that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission for Section C eight dash fifteen, and we're establishing a Department of Economic Development per the draft, excuse me, the final report. Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I recommend the, I, I move that we accept the recommendation of Charter Revision Commission to add Section C eight, C eight dash sixteen, Information Technology Department, and we're adding that as a department for the recommendation of the final report. Any fair discussion? Without trying my mind, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay. See. I'm getting down there. I make, excuse me, I move that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission for Section C nine dash one, General Board Procedure, Section, excuse me, Subsection D. "There shall be an opportunity for the public to speak at the start of all regular meetings of all elected appointed boards, commissions, and committees, except for those regular meetings where any public hearings appear in the meeting agenda. Such public input shall appear on the agendas thereof, the extent and duration of such public input being reasonable discretion of the chairman." We're actually changing in Section E, we're adding official rules for the procedure of any elected or appointed board commission shall be Robert's rules of order. Do you have a second? We'll discuss it. So this came really from kind of a recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission, because sometimes at P and Z meetings, when there's a, when there's not a hearing, they wait till the very end to get any public comment. Really, we shouldn't, as more commissions, we need that front to let people have their say. But it gives them out for the P and Z, that if they do have a hearing and they want to do it later, it keeps people from commenting on the hearing too early. The second piece is, we have in our charter that the Robert's Rules actually runs the town meeting. We've never established that Robert's Rules actually runs meetings for boards and commissions. This establishes that. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, without trying my mind, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Let's see, we did the we did the preparation of budget, I believe, to do with, did we do that? We did not. Okay. I move that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission, Section C ten dash two, Preparation Budget. The subparagraph E, and we have talked about the Board of Finance shall hold one or more public hearings on general town budget for not less than, and we've added seven days or more than fourteen days to give them a window. So with that, do you have a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. You already covered all that. With that. Now, hope it makes keep in love. Okay, um, I move we accept the recommendation of Charter Vision Commission for, uh, changing, accepting their recommendation for section C ten dash nine, salaries. Um, we have stricken, um, in the beginning, it says, following the adoption of said Charter Vision effectuating the same. And it would have said the Board of Finance shall set the annual salaries. We stricken that, and then we went down and we added, uh, that the salaries, uh, should be done during the regulatory process, preceding the next election, and said representatives annually and thereafter, the process. So basically saying during the budget process, the Board of Finance needs to set the salary. Any, um, further discussions, do you have a second? All in favor, say aye, aye. Motion carries. Almost there. Okay, last up. Um. I may, I move that we accept the recommendation of the Charter Vision Commission for section C eleven dash eleven meetings. Right now, um, everything has to be done at the town hall basically, or the school facility. So what we've done is we've changed the, uh, we said all regularly scheduled and/or special meetings of elected appointed boards and commissions shall take place at the Clifford J Menagerian, excuse me, Persian Municipal Center or a town-owned facility accessible to the members of the public. Exceptions may be made for site inspections. This allows the police commission to hold their meetings at the police station, library to hold their meetings in the library. Any further discussion on that? Without try minds, all in favor, say aye, aye, a motion carries. So Nick, we've run through all, all of it. Did I miss anything?
No, not, I, I was following along the whole time. I, I do not believe you missed anything.
Okay. Um, okay, so with that, we've, we've made the approvals and rejections. Um, the next step, which we don't have to do tonight. I, I don't think we should tonight, because we'd probably be, uh, Charter Vision Council and Town Council to decide that kind of been put on the ballot now. So we'll look at that as our next meeting, as that's our next step. Um, all this has, that part has to be done by, I think, September. So, uh, let me see, I definitely, I think I've done everything right. Um, so we're actually, um, I'll, I'll move that we table the last consideration of Charter Vision questions for the November twenty twenty five Miss election ballot for the next meeting. All in favor, say aye, aye, so that's tabled. Any further business to become before the commission? It's like four segments. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks for adjourned at nine thirty-three. You got a lot done tonight, I'm starting us so long, Brian.